Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Saturday, June 2nd. It is 9:00 a.m. and I will call this Yuma Elementary School District Number One Governing Board Study Session Meeting to Order. First Order of Business, Item Number Two, End of the Year Update on Progress Towards Our Last Year's Board Goals. Mr. Sheldahl.
Okay, I won't take too long on this. And I think I've got to meet Julie. Julie's here from ASBA. And part of ASBA, what they, they're obviously an organization to support school boards, but part of what they do is help facilitate certain meetings and kind of just offer support in general. So I'm gonna quickly go over this year's goals and then I'll turn it over to Julie to walk us through the rest of the meeting. So in December, we met and I provided a pretty extensive update, mid-year update towards our goals. And then, over the course of the last week or two, I've been providing some additional information via email about kind of updating the end of year. And I think I'll go in reverse. You've got the goals in front of you. The data that I sent out the other day, I mean, it shows that we're continuing to expand our footprint as far as parent engagement and community engagement. The number of people who are subscribing to our YouTube page, the number of people who are subscribing to our community newsletter, our reach regarding Facebook, regarding Instagram, continues to grow. And that's a testament to our, our community engagement folks, which is couched in Luciano's department. And yeah, we're, we're getting, we're just continuing to grow in that area. And it's, it's really quite remarkable because I thought we'd flattened out, but we continue to, to be capturing new viewers and new subscribers. The parent surveys, they came in, but they're not quite processed yet. So I will be sharing those via, via email. We did get the student surveys. Obviously, students are constituents as well, maybe our primary constituents. They were very positive. In general, our kids feel like their teachers care about them, like their teachers care about their learning, like they feel safe at school. Not surprisingly, the little ones feel safer at school in their single classroom cocoon than the middle schoolers out there. But still, very, they're very positive. So I'll, I'll be able to share both of those this coming week. As far as evaluating the state of our facilities, we've done a lot of work on that this year. And of course, I appreciate everybody being able to go to the, the walkthroughs to kind of look at the inequities that exist currently between our newer facilities. If we were in Scottsdale, they'd be saying, oh, Tondo, it's 35 years old or 30 years old? We gotta get, you know, that thing needs to be completely redone. But that's not where we are. We're Yuma. So I want to give Dennis some credit because we had a really, obviously, tough situation this semester. And Dennis has had to step in and work overtime. And, you know, both of us have had to engage to a greater extent with facilities. And we've got great people in our facilities department, but the fact is, they, they weren't versed on the school facilities website, on the portal, on all the kind of high-level requirements that a director has to, has to be versed on. And to their credit, the school facilities board set down our liaison to work with them, to work with Dennis. But it's been a real challenge and our, our new director will start Monday. So bringing him back up, bringing him up to speed will be part of one of the areas of attention, I think, that we want to, we want to bring out today, whether it turns into a goal or not, would be up to the board. But, you know, we're going to bring out a few different areas that we think are on our radar for the year. And, and that's one of them. The action steps were, you know, seeking multiple revenue sources. You saw in the report last week that we were given permission to go ahead with, with design for the price school. So the, Mr. Jones, our liaison, his, his words were, quote, "The money's there. The money has been deposited. You can start and you can even make your start date for this grant May 1st or May 15th." So anything you do, you can start spending money on design. And we finally got that commitment when he had, he said, "Well, when can we have 90% complete plans?" It's like, "We're not even starting actual plans until we are sure that we're getting this money in the bank account." He said, "Oh, it's there. It's there." So we've got a business schedule. So that Department of Defense, that's going to be about $7 million that we're going to have, give or take, in that area. So that's one area. SFB, we've been working. We reported earlier in the year that we had six envelope assessments approved, which means roof repair, new windows, new doors. If you're at the middle school walkthrough, you got to have Danny kind of point out how much sunlight comes through the door jambs at Woodard. And that's, that's, that's par for the course in a lot of our schools. The challenge is, we've only been funded for the design work on one of the six. And the SFOB, quite frankly, is out of money for the year. So because a good chunk of this year's money, which was an expanded amount, there was $200 million of one-time money infused into the SFOB this year. And more than half of it was taken on, by, taken up by projects that were approved last year. Okay? So now, we're still in this, in this mode where projects get approved, but the funding's not there. In fact, they've even added an additional step where you have the approval process and then you go to an additional process, which is now called the funding process. So right now, there's about $1 million in the account for the state. The formula is about 16.4 million for the state annually. And we're in a budget deficit scenario right now in the state. And the hope is, from what I've been reading and Dennis has been reading, that there will be another maybe five to seven million added on top of that 16.4 million. So to put that in perspective, our six projects are about 22 million.
So the entire state budget.
We're out there getting it done. We're out, we're out there getting these projects approved and searching for, and searching for other revenue sources. But the revenue has to be there at the state level. That leads us to the last source, which is asking the community for support in this So we're, we're working, we've put together a bond program. We've been keeping the board up to date. On the 11th, there'll be an action item. I hope that everybody will be able to sit down with Dennis and me next week if you have any questions. If you want to do it via Google Meet, if you want to come in, that'd be great. Quite frankly, Tuesday and Thursday are going to be the best days because Dennis is going to be with David Tamayo all day Monday and a good part of the day Wednesday, going around to different schools. And I'll be with, I'll be joining him as well. The afternoon, I'll witness at the state funding, capital funding lawsuit. So I'll be a witness that afternoon. So Tuesday and Thursday would be best, just to make sure that everybody understands exactly. And we can go through the, the survey that just came in. It's not fully parsed, but we have the high-level data that I talked about yesterday in the report.
And there's an overlap from number three to number two, correct? So as the committee was working on this item, they met at different schools and met with parent groups?
We did, yeah. We engaged between surveys and focus groups and so on. You know, I've put out there a few times in the report, we've engaged well over 1,000 people about sharing the need. And, you know, the process is, the district, the board identifies the need and then asks the, asks the community to support. So then what happened from there is the citizen group then runs that, that campaign to get the word out, to convince people that it's a worthy investment. And, you know, our district has been pretty well-supported over the decades for bonds. The, the rules have changed a little bit over the years. On the District One history that I've put in, maybe you've noticed, like, some years, the, back in the 60s or 70s, the district called a bond election on May 13th or June 10th. You know, they just kind of said, "This is going to be the election day and, you know, y'all come out." So can't do that anymore. It has to be on a general election day. It has to be one of the, one of the general election November dates. So one question people might have about alternate sources is what happens? Oh, let me just give you an example, too, of SFOB. We just got VRG, which is a building renewal grant approval, two of them, from Carver, to replace air conditioners, that were originally submitted in November. So that's kind of the nature of, that's, that's a good part of the lawsuit, is that the system is not effective, right? And there's a constitutional requirement in the state of Arizona for the state to provide, first of all, a general uniform system of education for all students. And secondly, that there's a minimum adequacy standard that's upheld in the facilities where kids are taught. So the, there are kind of two points to this lawsuit. One is that the state slashed our budget for more than a decade, just District One alone. It amounted to about $25 million that we were shorted over that time period. And the other is that the system is not, that the system's broken. And the resolution of this, quite frankly, I don't mean to sound skeptical, but if the plaintiffs win in this case, there will be an appeal. And even if, in the end, the plaintiffs prevail, which is the school districts in Arizona, it'll be years and years and years before everybody sees any money. So that's, we think that's one of the, one of the narratives that we're going to need to overcome for the bond, is if this lawsuit, as it continues, it should be wrapped up in June. And if the judge determines that, yes, the state needs to pay up, that, that could influence some people to say, "Well, you're going to have all this money coming in from the state." But the fact is, it won't come in during my career and it may not come in during my lifetime. But I've got longevity in my family, so I might. So, so yeah, I feel like we, you know, we've done a great job in that area this year. Especially given the challenges, because James LaGuna was a central figure in this process. And losing him literally overnight was, really caused everybody to have to really pick, you know, pick it up. Okay, the last one is student achievement. I shared some data. You know, I was major by Galileo. We had a lot of kids meet that internal 10% growth score. Some, some grade levels, you know, up to 75% of the kids grew 10% or more from Galileo I to Galileo II, or from Galileo II to Galileo III. The challenge is, and I presented this in December, I kind of gave you a scenario of a, a typical kindergarten class that comes in. The kindergarten class is about 70% to 75% of them qualify for free or reduced lunch, which means they are at a moderately low to low socioeconomic level. There's decades of research about that on student achievement. About 15% or more now are special education. About 15% now don't speak English as their primary language. So we're in a position where our task is to leapfrog these kids, right? That's the term that, that we've been using internally. We can't just grow them. If our kindergartners come in and they, they experience a year's academic growth or a year's input, which is considered good, they'll never, they'll never catch up, right? So our task is to, to, to leapfrog them, to figure out ways for big chunks of our kids to grow more than one year, more than one year's growth in one year, every year. So that's our challenge and that's, you know, and we accept it. So we, what we saw was, we saw that our kids grow, but they're not growing fast enough. And one area of real concern is math. If you look at the strategies, Avid, these are all research-based, there's a ton of research behind Avid. It's a great system. We have, our teachers are continually being trained. Our principals just spent all day yesterday on collaborative professional development. Our collaborative cycle, we really got a lot of traction on that this year. Our schools did a, were, were very intentional and made good headway in that collaborative piece. And then, of course, both of those, the third one, the personalized learning strategies, that's a product of those first two strategies. So we made good progress implementing those strategies, or in Avid's case, continuing to implement those strategies. We need to see, I think we need to be maybe a little more intentional about, about math. We're, we're seeing some growth in ELA.
We adopted an ELA curriculum.
We adopted a comprehensive ELA curriculum a few years ago. And as the teachers become more and more equipped to deliver the curriculum and work together to fully understand it, it's, it seems to be, you know, working. We don't really have a comprehensive math curriculum. That was a kind of a product of that state reduction in funding. Curriculum technically was a top, soft capital expense. We were cut by 85% our budgets. We were moving M&amp;O over. That's why our teachers were frozen for seven years. We're moving M&amp;O over to, to keep our buildings up and running. And so curriculum suffered. So let me give Dwayne just kind of a minute to talk about some of the challenges we see in math. One is, the standards have gotten increasingly complex. The complexity of the math standards has been pushed down to lower grades. And what I always say is, when I really want to relive my sophomore math class, I just go sit in a seventh-grade math class for a while. Because we've got seventh graders that are expected to, to do a slope-y intercept formula and, and graph that and, and graph the result of that formula. Totally abstract and stuff that I was doing, quite frankly, in 10th and 11th grade, and I was on the college track. And so, and the, the, so besides that, we have challenges in staffing. We have challenges in attracting high-quality math teachers because that, quite frankly, mathematics and science, those are areas where people who get those degrees in college can go out and make a lot more money than they can in the classroom. So, Dwayne can kind of give you a little background. And this is an area of concern that we're going to hopefully address here later in the morning.
Yeah, so the math standards were approved by the state in 2016. And then, back then, they were very different standards. If you remember the whole Common Core issue going across the country, everybody just upped the rigor of, of all their standards, okay? Great, there's no materials out there in 2016 to prepare to, to do anything with this. We used something called Eureka Math at first. Eureka Math was, was being written for the Common Core and we were, we were right there, right with it. And then, it was, it was a paper-based system. And then what came right next to it was ZERN, which was the, the electronic version of Eureka Math. And it, and so we thought, "Oh, hey, this is great." Because we all have one-to-one devices, so, so we went, we went down that route of having this electronic program called ZERN. So what was learned, well, what we knew already going in, we knew Eureka Math wasn't it, we knew there was an issue with Eureka Math, there's an issue with ZERN, and that is, it does not address EL kids and it doesn't address ESS. They've kind of beefed that up a little bit, but Jamie told you, "Hey, 30% of our district is, is, is in these two categories." So when you're looking at your classroom, you're thinking, "Wow, when I'm seeing these kids, I have 30%, 15% probably are English learners, 15% are probably ESS." That's huge in a district. So now we're asking our teachers, not only, "Hey, we need to push here," but "Don't forget, you have EL and don't forget you have ESS." Then all of a sudden, COVID hits. So we're thankful that we had ZERN right there because that was such an easy transition, right? And we, we didn't lose any ground as far as instruction in that, for all the kids who attended, we, they actually did, they did okay. We had issues with people not attending, but you, you all know that on, on that one. But then, well, we also learned something. So we've come back and, and our math scores aren't, aren't going in place. They are staying stagnant. They are just, and this is, this is unusual. So, so what we've really been looking at is, it's not addressing needs. It's not addressing our ESS. It's not addressing our EL. It's not even addressing our gifted. It's just addressing the middle of the road. And our middle of the road is not so middle anymore. And so, and, and having this last, this last set of data from, from AASA, it's, it's time for us to, to think about a comprehensive math program that, that we would, that we would embark on to, to, to help us meet the needs of all of our kids better. So I think that's where we're going to be heading this year. We're going to be moving towards that. The one thing I think we also learned from ZERN is it's online. It was a lot, and it was totally done online. Kids, you know, kids could actually do their math online. They could write on the things. We're thinking, "That's not enough for kids and their muscle memory of, of doing math." I think they need a little bit, we need a little bit more, probably back down on paper, not everything being done electronically. Because electronically, you know, there's usually, you can push something to get you to advance to the next screen without having to really know it. That's, so I think we've learned some of those things is, from there is, the teacher is still, you know, what we've learned about everything, the teacher is paramount. Good teachers are absolutely paramount for the district. We have to keep looking for and recruiting good teachers for our kids. That is, that is when it all comes back to, the quality of teacher will equal the quality of our, of our, of our scores as well. And so, so I think that's where we're, that's where we're going to head, head this year. It would take an entire year to do that, for us to really, to, to think through. We'll get input from principals, from, from, from teachers. What, what do we need as we go down that road?
And we have a math coordinator now.
Yeah, we do, yes.
Who's been able to spend this year in classrooms and kind of take stock of where we are, both in terms of instruction and instructional materials.
Jamie, the, the Galileo, AASA reports, when did those come in?
They're just coming in now.
They're just coming in now?
Yeah.
How can we, once those come in, how can we see that and the ones from last year to compare ourselves?
Yeah, we can share that. And we can, it's probably best if we do it in a setting like this.
Okay.
Because it's just a ton of material.
Sure.
It's a ton of data.
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
So we'll set something up for that?
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Yeah, that'd be great to look at.
The, right now, we don't know what all the state data is. Early indications are that the state's flat as well. State didn't see, since COVID, the state hasn't seen growth. Nationally, we haven't seen growth. One of the things that we're looking at is, this third grade, which is the first year, their kindergarten year was significantly disrupted by the pandemic. So now we're, so we're in a stage now where every one of our grades that's being tested was significantly impacted and disrupted. Their, at least one year of their, of their, of their education so far. Next year's third grade will not have been in kindergarten, right? They will have been preschoolers or at home. One thing we're reading anecdotally is that even kids at home during that time experienced much less social interaction, much less socialization, wide disparity of opportunities that parents can, can, can provide for kids. So that, you know, that impact may even be seen, you know, in, in coming years as well. But one thing we're keeping an eye out for is, okay, next year's third graders, they were, they weren't at school yet during that timeframe. So will we start to see some traction again? Both our district, the state, the nation. But what we're seeing is a lot of stagnation. The, the consequences are pretty stubborn, have been pretty stubborn.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Sheldahl? Other questions about data that was, that we read in our Friday report or anything that he shared with us or that Mr. Shepherd shared with us?
See, what happens is, the stuff comes into the state in this huge file. And then Chris Aver's like this for days and days and days and days, trying to get it into a, a format that's pretty comprehensible for, you know, for most people. And then, quite frankly, looking at the old testing system, which was called AIMS, the blueprint, what they call the blueprint, they did a great job of breaking down for teachers. Look, on this test, there are three questions that cover this standard and objective. Okay, now we get 25% to 37% of the questions cover informational text.
Two domains.
Okay, great. And here's how your kids did on informational text. There are a bunch of standards within that, right? So the ability of teachers to work together and drill down and really focus on what's being tested is just not there like it used to be. So you, and in the old days, you used to see schools really be able to focus on that and you could see test scores really start to get some traction. That, that infrastructure's not there. And I'm going to end with a joke. That I heard.
So that, was it the joke?
No. No, that was the sad truth. So this is, this is my analogy for, for state testing and for high-stakes testing. So a police car pulls up and there's this guy standing around, it's like 2:00 in the morning, and he's standing around the street looking down like this. And the police officer says, "Can I help you with something?" He says, "Well, I, I can't find my car keys. I'm looking for my car keys." He says, "Okay, well, there's no cars parked around here. I mean, do you think you, do you think you dropped your keys here?" He said, "Well, I don't, I don't have any idea of where I dropped them, but the light's better here."
Hey, did you guys see the guy on, he was on a Zoom session before the judge? I think this happened last week. Driving with, with a suspended license. Did you see that? It must have been the same guy.
You're driving right now? Uh, yeah, just pull into the driveway. You don't have a driver's license.
Literally, the judge was like, right? Okay, well, thank you for that progress update. We're moving on to item number three, goal-setting for 2425 school year. And we're going to, I give the help of Julie Bacon.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, thanks for having me. Yuma is one of my favorite places to travel to in Arizona. Come here frequently and love your community. So thanks for allowing me to be here with you and in, in your world. This is the best part of the job, is to get out and actually see what's happening and work with boards. So if you can move that. So what I just want to do is... So what I just want to do is just go around your, your name and the number of years, months, days of board service and or as an educational professional. That would be great. I have days in there because there are so many boards that are losing board members. And sometimes they're appointed and I'll go and train and they'll be like, well, I've been a board member for ten days. I'm like, oh, okay. We're, we're at stage one. So I'm just going to start with you and we'll go ahead.
Jamie Sheldel. Just finished my thirty-seventh year as an education professional. Junior high, language arts teacher, high school, English and ESL teacher, high school activities director, athletic director, academics assistant principal, high school principal, associate superintendent and superintendent. I kind of, kind of worked my way through the con.
Thank you, strike. This is my, this is my fourth year as a board member. Thirty-seven years in education. I was an English, high school English teacher and speech teacher and coach and athletic director and assistant principal and principal. And I've retired to take care of my family, but I couldn't stay away. I wanted to be part of something bigger than myself. So here I am.
Great. Name's Adele Henning, and I've been on the board for three and a half years before the end of the year. I'm just a community member that's passionate about public education.
My name is Anthony Geier. I, I've been in education since ninety-seven. I taught K-12 and now I teach college.
Oh, great.
Keith Ware. Been on the board for two and a half years.
Teresa Fox. I've been on the board seven years. Taught self-eating classroom, also science for about fifteen years.
Great.
I'm Joyne Shepherd, associate superintendent. And this is, I'm just finished my thirty-eighth year.
Old timer.
I am.
At least she got somebody to say. She's more years than you.
Dennis Honder, chief financial officer. I've been working in education over twenty years.
Sammy Oss, director of community resources. And I started in two thousand and five. So it's my nineteenth year.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Monica?
Yes. Monica Delaro. I've been with the district for twenty-three years. And I'm Mr. Sheldel and work for the district. Enjoy it.
My right arm.
Most important person in the group.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
So my name is Julie Bacon, and I'm director of leadership development for the Arizona School Boards Association. I also was a board member. I served for twelve years in the Paradise Valley Unified School District, which does not have any schools in the town of Paradise Valley. At all. Scottsdale Unified Schools are in the town of Paradise Valley. So the school district that I serve in was, is a very diverse district. Twenty, probably now twenty-nine thousand students, hundred square miles in Phoenix. I'm also the daughter of two teachers. I am also the mother of a teacher. My daughter teaches, well, she's going to be teaching sixth grade. And when you were talking about math, she, she was teaching a math lesson. She's trying to figure out how to teach a math lesson. She came for dinner and she says to my husband, who's a chemical engineer, so how would you, how would you solve this problem? He was, this is what you're giving sixth graders? And she's like, yeah. And he's like, well, you need this formula and that formula. So I just feel this pain for students because math was never my subject. But anyway, I also have a son who is a graduate of Arizona Public Schools, who's a mechanical engineer. So I've worked with the association for almost five years. I had a little bit of a sabbatical in, from August to May. August of last year, May of this year. And now I'm back and really excited to be doing this work. So let's talk a little bit about, you know, when we talk about goals, let's, yeah, oh, I put a flyer in your folder. The PowerPoint is in your folder. So if you're like me and you like to take notes and write stuff down, you can do that. There's also a brand new spanking ASVA pen there. Yeah. This is something that we refer to a lot at ASBA, the eight criteria six of effective boards. And this is a compilation of research that's been done. So I included that in your packet just so you can look at it. We're not going to review it, but I just wanted you to know it's there. And yeah. So when, before we talk about any, any training that I do, we always start with roles and responsibilities so we can kind of set the stage for the board's job in the training that we're doing or the facilitation that is happening. So this is roles and responsibilities. Government board has oversight. And you can see on the left-hand side of this, you know, policy, budget, strategic priorities, supervision and evaluation of the superintendent. So that straight, strategic priorities is where we're going to focus, you know, today and really kind of try to drill down on what your goals for the coming year will be. The superintendent's authority is over operations. So that's just the day-to-day management of the school district, resource management and super envision and evaluation of employees. So resource management is really, you have resource allocation. That is your job as board members. And then it is superintendent's job to manage that in the way that the board has asked them to do. So if we go to the next slide. So again, the board's roles to govern. We, with support of the district staff, you set direction, you approve the budget and you monitor progress towards goals. We really want to commend you for having goals and paying attention to them because a lot of school districts don't have any kind of strategic plan, strategic goals. They're not, they're just kind of doing the job that they have to do, which is important. But to know where you're going is something that's really valuable. So I'm, I'm really happy that you're doing this because I think it's a, it's a great thing. And it is, one of the jobs that you have as board members is to provide that strategic direction, the oversight, where you want the district to go. So congratulations for taking the time this morning to do that. And you are accountable to the community because if they don't like what the board members are doing, what's going to happen?
Vote.
They're going to vote you out, right? They're not going to, they're not going to vote for you again. So that is the accountability for board members. The next slide set shows us what the superintendent's roles and responsibilities are. So to manage, oversee the day-to-day operations, implements policies and establishes the plans to meet the goals set by the board. And the superintendent is accountable to the board. And one of the things that I think is really important is that the supervision and evaluation of the superintendent by the board as a whole. You know, the board is, in a meeting like this, you have power, legal authority as a whole board. Outside of that, we're, we're all just individuals walking around on the street and have no more authority than anyone else when it comes to the school district. So, and again, your evaluation of the superintendent is how they are held accountable. So this is just another kind of graphic that I think is helpful to see what the board does and what the superintendent does. And, you know, the board figures out the why, what, how much. And then the superintendent figures out the how, when, where, who's going to do it. The, the board has the vision, mission, goals, policies. You monitor and you vote on, on items. The superintendent has the objectives, the action plans. They have the regulations that go along with the policies. They implement those things and then they also recommend to the board so the board can vote on items that come before them. So this is your goals. We've, we've talked about this. I want to talk a little bit more about goals. I had this here with that, so that's great. So we can go to the next slide. And I wanted to just talk to you about goal development. So district goals and board goals are not one and the same. The board goals is to improve the functioning of the board in support of the district and its goals. So it pertains to the board and their operations. The board is responsible for those goals. The district goals is to move the district towards fulfilling its mission, which is obviously always successful student outcomes. You want every student who walks in to be successful, prepared, ready to go to high school, the next step of their educational career. So it pertains to the district and their operations. The administrative ownership is the district staff. The district staffs are responsible for the actions. You are responsible for monitoring those actions to see if you're reaching the goals that you want. So you go to the next slide. I want to talk really briefly about SMART goals. So specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. And we'll go through each one of these as we go through. So the next slide shows us specific and measurable. So define the subjective terms that you might have in your goals. And is it clear what you want to achieve? And then measurable is to identify your success descriptors. What would you see that would let you know you're making progress? So here's an example of a goal. All families will be happy with published communication from the district. Not SMART or measurable. Because you're not saying how you're going to communicate with them. And how will you know if they're happy? What's the definition of happy? So you have to be really careful in the establishment of goals. The next one talks about attainable. So do we have the capacity to do it? What are the barriers that we might encounter? And is it realistic to accomplish this in the time, timeframe that we've set? So you want to make sure that what you are saying you want to do, you actually can do in the timeframe that you set. So every student in Arizona will be proficient in ELA on double A S A in school year twenty-four, twenty-five. That's probably not attainable. Is it, is it an absolute goal? Is that what we want to happen? Absolutely, we do. But let's make sure that we know, you know, as individual school districts, how we can get there. You know, what is, what are the things that we can do? The next one is relevant. Will this goal make an impact on our larger goals and visions? And is the goal within my hour power to complete? So all students will know the high school fight song by the end of the school year. Okay, that's cool, right? And it builds community and culture and pride. But if you have a goal for academics, is that something that, that, it might have a little part to building a sense of belonging and a culture where students are really engaged and all of those things. But is it relevant enough to the goal that you're trying to accomplish? And then time-bound. So can we accomplish this in the next year or whatever the timeframe is that you have set? Can we do it in the next three years? And if not, what can we do in the next year or three years or five years? That is, what's our timing on this? When do we want it to be? So board members will attend one school event. A year, a week, a month? How, how's that measured? What's that going to look like? So, I mean, obviously, these examples are extreme. But I think they give us a sense of what it is that we want to accomplish. So, and then goal cycle is just you develop them, you implement, and then you assess. And it's just an ever continuing cycle. And then you decide if you've reached the goal that you said, what's our next step? Where are we headed to next? So that brings us right back to where we started. So what's next? What are the goals that are? So let's, first, let's just start with going around specifically each of the board members. And like based on what Dr. Shaddell talked about, what are some goals that, did any goals pop up in your head as you were having that conversation discussion around last year's goals? Any new goals pop into your head?
Not new goals. Goals that should stay.
Yeah, goals that should stay.
And get beefed up. Yeah, and like the math, for example. Maybe add something to the math.
I broke it down to the focus, student-centered on achievement and parent engagement. Those are the two biggest things that produce a successful student in their education. Everything else is secondary, right? But if the goal's focused on those two aspects, if you look at other schools that have higher parent participation, their students typically achieve better scores, better education. So I think that that's, that's important. That's part of engage parents and communities. Right? One is an achievement-based. But I think those two are, are extremely important in what public education is about.
I agree with that. And I also thank you adding something pertaining to math. Absolutely.
Which could be folded under your number one goal?
Right.
If you wanted to.
The second piece to it.
Yeah. Well, and I like the facilities. I mean, I think it's important to have a clean, nice, safe environment in which to learn. I mean, that, that also is important. This is Fox, anything?
I agree with what you're saying.
And first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to participate and not run the show. Because you know I like to run the show, but this is awesome. Like I get to be a player. No, I agree with what, what Keith had said and what everybody said is, student achievement, this should be our number one focus. If we can put math in there, we can specifically call out math. Not that we let up on ELA or we let up on anything, but that math becomes a primary focus. And that will drive professional learning, that will drive curriculum, that will drive so many things that we do. And engaging parents in the community. And I, I think that needs to get beefed up. So talking about parent engagement, so we have the, the evidence sitting there, but maybe we need to beef out the action steps or have the principal say, how are you going to accomplish this at your school? And then have you come back and say, okay, let me tell you what the middle schools are going to do to increase parent engagement. Maybe we have ideas we can share or we can, but we need to monitor that. And then I do feel like we've got this facilities, we've got this process going. We, we employed our CADIS to look at everything. And if we go down this road of calling for the bond election, I think we need to continue to monitor that. I don't know, we're not going to evaluate. We've already evaluated this year. So the evaluation goes out the door because that's something we didn't accomplish. But if, if we want to still say our facilities are old and we need to stay on top of that to provide a safe, I think safety is key, a safe learning environment for our students and our staff, then maybe we need to turn that one around. That one needs to be not thrown out, but it needs modification because we did it. We evaluated this year.
Okay. So these goals. So let's look specifically at goal one and what you have underneath it. So my question when we look at these goals is, how do you, do you want to set some timeframes in here, you know, in the first goal? I think this is a really general goal that helps you understand and can fit many different things in there. Like we said, it's ELA, it's math. I think that's great. So we could keep it the way it is. We could rewrite it to give some timeframe goals out there. So that's just something, you know, for all of you to be thinking about. You know, other districts that I've worked with have, have set a percentage in this sort of goal and a by the end of the, you know, by the end of school year XYZ, whatever, whatever they decide they want to do. And then you do have those objectives underneath where you can say, okay, to do this, we need to improve our math scores. So we need to adopt or, I don't know.
Go through the process.
Evaluate and adopt a new math, a comprehensive math curriculum. That could be, you know, a sub-goal underneath that goal. And there could be other things that your experts here at the table could help you understand what other things could work to continue to improve ELA. Or, or to do the, how do we rise those kids? Or, or to do the, how do we raise those kids out of minimally proficient? We want less kids there. So what, what can we do to do that?
Aren't we so close? Didn't you, what am I remembering? And Dwayne showed something a while back about how our kids are just almost to the line for...
The bubble kids.
The bubble kids, yeah.
Yes, 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 yes. So we haven't, we haven't looked at it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, that's one of our next things. I can only get so much out of this.
But we'll look at that again.
I just had it down at his desk this week and I said, you know, every time I walk in here, I feel like I'm just going to overwhelm you with the next project. That is on the list.
Okay.
We're working, we're working on that. To see how, yeah, what happened.
How we can move that, or did we move it? Yeah, yeah, okay.
You gave an example of basically revamping the math curriculum. Wouldn't, wouldn't the goal be to improve math and allow superintendent principals and staff to figure out if the system needs to be revamped? Rather than setting the goal to revamp it?
Yes. So you could evaluate, you know, evaluate your math curriculum, current math curriculum and make recommendations as needed, if needed, when needed.
We just want to, we just want to have the, it needs to improve. Play either a tangible amount, let them, change me and staff figure out the best path to achieve.
And then bring it back to you and talk, right? Because then they're going to say, they may say, it sounds like they're already saying they need a different math, you know, curriculum, comprehensive one. Which is then your job, right? To allocate the resources, to allow the community to go through that process. I mean, there are laws around how you adopt curriculum in Arizona. So you have to, you know, obviously play that out. But also then it's your understanding and support of that with resource allocation and focus on it with goals. You know, let, let your educators know, we see there's an issue and we are going to help you solve that issue. That does so much to build community and a feeling of, I can do this. I've got people who are going to help me get there. And that, I think, is a lot of a teacher's struggle every day in a classroom. So, so that is something, yeah, to kind of evaluate the curriculum, what you're currently using, and make recommendations as needed.
That's their action step. Our, our goal and our vision is to improve our math scores as measured by AASA and Galileo.
Just to interrupt, I think five years ago, we could have sat at this table and discussed student achievement with a lot more confidence and a lot more insight than we can today. There's been so much disruption that it's, it's a lot fuzzier. The crystal ball's a lot murkier.
So one of the goals can be to adopt new math curriculum? That would be a district very...
Well, that would be a...
It'd be an action step.
Yeah, I mean, you could, and it couldn't say adopt in it. You could evaluate, you know, examine and then adopt as recommended by the administration. So we can play with these a little bit so that they have a little bit of each of those pieces in it so that you give yourselves the ability to actually vote on it this coming year if you want to.
That would be a goal to get that done.
Yeah, but this 30,000, this 30,000-foot view is that our math scores need to improve. Our student achievement needs to come up in those areas. We're thinking, we're forward-thinking with our kids. If we say we want to put money into STEM, and we want to put money into the environment of STEM, well, we need to up our math.
The M.
Yeah. So we need to improve that. And one of the actions that we'll take is, okay, governance team, let's go evaluate our math curriculum. And if necessary, we will adopt one. And you tell us which one you want. And then we'll review it and the community will review it. But way up here, I think we want to see our student achievement in math go up. And then how we get that done, we're going to tell you guys, get it done. Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so math curriculum, it sounds like that's something that you can incorporate into these, kind of the strategies that are underneath each of these goals. And those I really would make SMART because they're, you know, they are time-bound. You know, you want, you don't want to have that as your sub-goal for three years. Something you can get done in a year. Or, you know, a year and a half. So that is something, I think, the math curriculum, we could, you could incorporate. Of these ones that are on here now, the Avid, the STEP, and the personalized learning strategies, are these things you want to keep? Are these things that you have accomplished? So you're continuing.
They're ongoing.
They're ongoing. It's what the teachers do, and I don't know.
Right.
So when you look at, these aren't necessarily parallel. They don't have to be. But right here, we say, this is the way we're going to, down at the bottom, this is our evidence. But in the middle, this is what we're, we're going to do. The district's going to do. And up here, this is what teachers are going to do. So I think we're kind of mixing, so I've written so many continuous improvement plans. And so I'm just thinking of these big boxes of, here's your big goal. And then here's your SMART goal. So here's your vision and here's your SMART goal. Here's what the teachers are going to do. Here's how we're going to know. Here's our timeline. So maybe this just needs to get cleaned up. Do we need to call out these bullets of what the teachers are going to do? Should we just put it on you guys and say, make sure the teachers do it? Or does that need to be called out in our, is this important for our, our community to know we're expecting our, our schools and our teachers to do these things? I don't know. I'm not saying I'm not qualifying it.
Or is this more of an internal?
Yes, yeah.
Administrative.
Because do they know? I mean, we spell it out, but...
That, that could be part of the specific in the SMART goal.
True.
That's a very specific piece of the goal. So I mean, I don't think it would be out of place necessarily to call it out.
It is very micro, though, when you think about what you want to add in that.
But it's used across all the curriculum, though. No matter what's being taught.
Right, correct. Yeah. Yep. Avid Strategies is not just about math. It's about ELA, social studies, science, STEM, the whole, the whole thing.
And it maybe fit more, better, more better.
Such a good grammar.
I didn't mean more better. I meant better. Under a goal, a goal about instruction as opposed to achievement.
Right.
We, we all understand that, that instruction drives achievement, right? High-quality instruction, high-quality materials, that drives achievement. But I think it may be better to kind of acknowledge how we're going to go about the instruction as opposed to what our goal is about the result of the instruction. And we kind of squished them together.
We did.
We have historically, I guess, that's, looking at that.
Well, so you mentioned internal, external. So I'm just thinking, I would, I would love to have something, especially in this year of elections or this year of bond or whatever. Like, here are these big goals that our board is trying to push forward. And that's why you need to give us more money to make these things happen. And then internally, I want, I want the teachers to know and the principals to know from the governance team what the expectation is for them, how they're going to help us achieve those goals. But I don't know that that necessarily has to be the big lofty public goal. So there could be the internal, those yellow big goals, that's our external. And then we can help brainstorm, but then eventually, we're just going to say, get the Avid stuff done, Dwayne, and make sure our teachers are doing it. Because we, we know what Avid is. We go to those conferences, but we don't make it happen. I'm still talking around it. But I think we need to have big lofty goals that are SMART and then leave the specifics to the people who do the work.
So the specifics are sometimes called key performance indicators, right? KPIs. So those KPIs, you could have something to say about those in terms of timeframe, in terms of, you know, how you want to get it done, what you're measuring. But the actual steps to getting those done are really done by the administrative staff. You just know what, what, what the big goal is, what, what your key performance indicators are. So that is, you know, evaluate, research, and adopt a comprehensive math curriculum by the end of whatever school year, right? So next school year. So that could be a key performance indicator. Now, how they're going to do that is up to them. How are they going to evaluate? How are they going to research? You know, what, what is that going to look like is really up to your administrative staff.
They're going to be involved in it.
You can get feedback on it. You can hear about it. And you might have a suggestion. I was queen of suggestions when I was on the board. Hey, I think you should do it this way. And the superintendent would say, thanks for sharing. Thanks for sharing. Exactly, noted.
Why were you pointing at me when you said that?
Well, I, I suspect with as many educators as you have on this board, it is hard for you to step back to say...
Keith's daughter's an educator, too.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's...
Anna Dells.
Anna Dells. So we're all, we all have something.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's hard, you know? I mean, when I was on the board, my daughter was a student in the district and then she was an employee of the district. Both my kids were students in the district. Her, I didn't worry about. The other one, he was, yeah. He actually made it. He has a college degree.
Did you say it's called Boyd?
It's called Boyd.
Yes, yes, I can attest.
Is that the infliction?
I mean, you know, present company, not excluded.
Okay, so do you guys think we should have? I, I still think student achievement should be on our radar. But do we have a separate math goal? Or how do we roll it into student achievement?
I kind of agree with three goals as the max. You really get spread out.
But what if math is a sub-goal? Then it's still part of the three? Or is that a fourth to you?
Or is that a pull-up to the facilities?
I think it's a highlighted.
Okay.
Right, so we, we identify achievement, progress specifically focused. I mean, if, if we had to pick one area to put all our resources in, it sounds like math is that area. And I think we can accept that as, if that's where the resources go. Mind you, we don't take a step back on the other disciplines. But with the understanding we're going to focus on math because that's the area that needs the most attention.
So extra emphasis instead of just...
Or do we improve student achieve, math student achievement scores? Not that we ignore ELA. Teresa?
No, I think, I think we, we still want everything increased. And then the sub, as you said, that would be...
With the focus on...
Yeah. On math, because we don't want anything to drop.
So I don't know that you actually need to change this goal, this first goal, unless you think it's not specific enough. But it's pretty specific. I mean, increasing proficiency and reducing minimally proficient. And that, that tells you. Now, you could put a percentage in there, right? You could say, you know...
We had a 10...
We were pushing 10, but we didn't lock it in. We had an internal 10.
It was the first year that we were trying this. And we wanted to see what was achievable.
And so maybe when you go over your data, the next time you go over that, you, you could have a sense of what is achievable. You know, is 10% achievable? I mean, that's a lot of students.
We knew it was...
And math is captured. Because if everything else goes up and math continues, yet stays stagnant or declines, that's not really achieving your goal in its entirety, right? It's not trying to push one subject to overcome.
Another.
We're looking at holistically that overall needs to go up. So I think it does include math. But I do think as a subset underneath, you know, saying, with focus on math.
So...
Something as simple as that. It uses the tangibles in the yellow, but with the understanding that math is the focus.
So below, you have three bullets. So we could, one of those bullets could be math. And it could be, you could put a time stamp on that.
By the end of the school year.
Yeah. You have Avid on here, Avid Strategies. Have your teachers all been trained in Avid?
So that's, that's how I think. That could be a goal is, you know, a certain percentage of our teachers would, would receive Avid professional development.
Correct. So this year, in, in Avid and math specifically, we're going to go down the road of math discourse. And math discourse was chosen. It's, it is one of the goals within our DODA grant. And so our DODA grant for DOD students, for our military-connected students, we have 10, I think we have seven schools attached to that particular math goal. And then we're going to create, we have a cohort being created that will go through training on, on math discourse. So that's, that's kids talking about math and, and getting kids more to collaborate, to use their, especially if you're talking about EL kids. That means kids are, EL kids are talking more. If you're talking about ESS kids, then you're talking about kids who are explaining what, what is happening, what, and hopefully, what I understand, what I don't understand in that as well. So that, I, that is already, it's on paper. And we're looking how to, how to deploy that for this year.
And unfortunately, kind of to go back to my story that I ended with, people learn when they go back and forth and discuss concepts, right? They don't, that, that doesn't necessarily translate to kids doing better on the test. Because the test, there's no discourse on the test. It's, you know, it's a... And, and to go back to, we shouldn't draw back, pull back on anything. And I think we can, we can show some of this in subsequent meeting. The math test is first and foremost a reading test.
You're right.
It's, I mean, we looked at some questions this year. Third-grade math, where there's a scenario, third grade.
Two trains.
There's a scenario. And then which of the following, what's the term? Formulas.
Okay, yeah.
Would accurately reflect this scenario? And the fact is, three of the five would. And if you don't get all three of them right, you get the question wrong. I mean, it's a, it's something.
So, so when we said that we have a goal on math, you know, and you're supposed to implement a way to make that happen, one of the ways is to attack improving the reading, like you just said.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, they're all overlapping.
Yes, absolutely.
They do.
Right, they sure do.
It's interesting, and I just want to bring this up for everybody to keep in mind while we're talking about these. But I've heard it said multiple times, the second language students. Right? That is, what, 15%? I think you had mentioned earlier. Communication, that, that conversation, it's very difficult. Let's all go pick up and go to Japan and try to learn something simple.
Yep.
Right? How do we fix that?
And interestingly, what we're, what we're seeing, and my wife taught ESL at the high school district, what we're seeing in the last few years is a much higher concentration of kids in what we call the pre-emergent and emergent levels. Before COVID, the students were spread out much more between the pre-emergent, emergent, the intermediate, and the kids who were about ready to, to become fluent or what we call Fab Functional English. And Dwayne and I were just talking about that last week is the percentage of kids that are at that, that lower level.
That aren't fluent in their first language.
We saw the same thing. You know, Renee started her first, started the year with like 18 kids in her pre-emergent class and ended the year with 36. They just kept coming in. And some of the kids are, were born in America, started their school. Parents, for whatever reason, during, you know, moved down to Mexico for whatever reason, because they have family there. And now they're back in high school and they haven't been speaking English for the last five, six, seven years, you know? So, yeah, that's a, that's the balance, the, it's that whole reclassification piece.
So I, I mean, I, I was going to start making little checkmarks next to these three things that keep coming up over and over again. The three that I have is recover from COVID, Spanish-speaking children, and math. We've said those three things over and more times than we've said anything else except for more better. Sorry.
It was just too easy, wasn't it?
You know, Dennis is from Kentucky.
It would be more gutter.
Maybe not for this year, but I, I want us to, to look at those. Those are repeated statements. And we're seeing the data. We're talking about kids that didn't experience COVID. You know, we're actually, we're looking at pulling that data. So that's somehow, at least in the future, we should incorporate. You know, those are the three things that are being repeated.
And I'm going to add specialite onto that a little later.
Yep.
I'm going to raise the 15% to 18 and a half percent. Just like this, yeah.
For special ed.
That's a big chunk.
For.
Well, special ed too, we've had 300.
Yeah.
We have 300 more students who qualify for special education this year than we had two years ago.
Are they cross-category?
They're all across the board.
We have.
With a high concentration in autism.
Autism, right?
We'll have added 12 specialized programs over two years.
We're not allowed to provide educate or material in Spanish, are we?
We don't teach, we don't teach.
Instruction is any way.
Instruction is any.
And instructional.
We have, we have, there are supplemental resources that kids can access that are in Spanish.
And our parent communications.
But we don't, we don't teach in, we only teach in English.
But our parent communications off of the home.
Yes, yes. So, yes, our, our student information system says, you have a choice, how would you like to receive your communication? In Spanish or in English or is there another? So, because we have, it's not just Spanish in our district, we have some other speaking children. Vietnamese is probably our third in our district. And we have somebody just from Turkey this year, we have a lovely family who's from Turkey. This year, anyway, so I, I, but we have, we have over 1,600 kids in EL, we have over 1,500 kids in ESS. So if you, and then some of those kids do cross over, we don't have that number, we're, we're trying to figure out what is that? Who, who are both ESS and EL, we're trying to get that number, um, set, but that's a lot of kids.
Even if only 50% crossover, 30%.
Yeah. It is, it, it's tremendous. And just, so you have a little bit of understanding, five years ago, if you were to ask us about EL kids, we'd probably be down 1,100, 1,200, uh, kids and most of them were in the intermediate. They were, they were just on the cusp of becoming proficient. What we're finding out now, uh, due to, I think, due to what's happening on the border, most of our kids are now at the pre-emergent, emergent basic. We are, these are kids coming into our schools who do not even have a little bit of English.
I think COVID is playing into that too, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I think so, I think we had, I think we had lots of, we had lots of families leave, Jamie said, we had lots of families leave, go down, now they are returning. And, and please don't assume that they all went to school while they were down in Mexico. That's not happening. And so kids are coming back, we're putting in them in their grade, uh, appro, their age-appropriate grade. Which is, that, that's a different.
Right.
You know, that's a different thing we have to deal with, but yeah. Because we have, we have a situation where we're going to have a 16-year-old in our middle school in two years. We have to figure out exactly what we want to do.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
So they're driving to middle school.
Right. That's where we draw the line when they start taking our parking spots.
So do we tighten up number one and move on or how do we, where, where do we go from here?
So what I think we should do is, um, I think number one can generally stay the same, the overall goal. And then I think you can add, um, other goals underneath, right? One would be to, I mean, you could do decrease the stu, number of students in minimally proficient in math by 5% at the end of the 24, 25 school year or 25, 26 school year.
As a sub-bullet.
As a sub-bullet. And then under that, underneath that, then you're going to do your discourse, you're going to evaluate your curriculum, you're going to look at probably teacher professional development. So there are pieces of that that will help you accomplish that, yeah.
That's how we're going to get through that.
Yeah, so my question is, under that number one, under that broad goal, is it just math? Or are there other things you want to do? Do you want to do, and I'm just like, I'm just off the top of my head. Do you want to do an audit, your classrooms to see how much avid, how many avid strategies are being implemented? Or do you want to add the?
We already have, we already have that going.
Yeah, so training, is there anything else that you want to add under that number one goal besides math? Or is that enough?
Are you talking about sub-specific or let's just?
Whatever achievement goals are.
Let's see how painful math. You know, we could raise the bar a little.
Yes.
Because I don't, I don't think your ELA, our ELA, ELA teachers and our, our, our primary elementary teachers are going to take their foot off, oh, well, now we're doing math, so we're not going to worry about ELA. They're going to continue to push it, we don't need to call that out, that's just the expectation. You're a professional, do your job, teach English, teach kids how to read. But we're going to put a special attention on math.
Yeah, special attention so they don't think it's just that. It's the special attention on. Just make sure that's clear.
Okay, so then number one is, I think we're done.
So who's going to draft that?
I, I can, I can draft and send to the two of you. You can then work with, and then change whatever you want.
Wordsmith.
But I, I can wordsmith.
Okay.
What we talked about today. And then you guys can take whatever I provide and make it yours and adopt.
Julie, add, add one more thing if we can, for just a little bit of discussion, you can, uh, school board, you can definitely, you can go that. Jamie, um, you're going, are you going to take reducing the number of students into a sub-goal? Is that what you're going to end up doing? Can we also do the other end? Can we push 5% into highly proficient please as well? So our ends are moving. Reducing and we're, and I think it, it sends a very different message also to teachers. Hey, because our teachers always work on minimum, uh, reducing kids in the minimum proficient. But I think we also have to have time to think about our high kids too and to, um, to move that.
What's a very good idea.
So if your parents, there's nothing on. They just teach to the middle.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, good idea.
Okay.
So Julie, have you captured that?
I will capture that.
And I, it's, it's hard work. It sounds simple.
It's just.
Oh, yes, yes. It was so easy to say that and, and, and what many of you guys all agreed.
Yeah.
And our teachers are going. Thank you, Duane. Thank you.
Yeah, we got feedback from principals that, you know, especially.
We have some, we have some things in place that, that will help teachers though, to, to get to that though. We just need to, we need to just use it.
Right, and I know that with anything, once you start getting towards that high-end achievement, it takes far more invested to get this less distance. So I would even be open to 2 and 1/2%. Take a look at historically and, and what you think it's going to do with those numbers. Because 5% may be a huge number of students, which may not be achievable, understanding that.
Especially on both ends, 5% on both ends.
Yeah.
You're really talking about moving 10% significantly.
That's a shift.
Yeah.
So I want these to be achievable.
Sure, right. So are we going to go with the 5% on one end and 2 and 1/2 on the other? Are we doing 5 on both? What are we going to do so that is clear?
What I'm going to do is I'm going to write this goal and I'm going to put a blank. Because I think you should look at your data from this year to see what is realistic. You know, you don't want it to be, you don't want to decide something before you have.
Yep.
You know, that information.
If you have 40, 40 kids in the proficient and you're going to take 5% or 40% in proficient, you're going to take 5% of them to highly.
It's got to be a realistic goal.
That seems like it's pretty high.
Question, if we are collaborating in a Google Doc, is that an open meaning violation if we're not all in there at the same time?
Oh, you went down that route.
You can't be all there.
We wouldn't, I don't see how we possibly would, but it's possible.
It probably needs to be where I continue to do BCC to everybody and then.
Okay. And send feedback.
You have, you have the same, yes. You can't be in the same Google Doc.
Or create a separate Google Doc for each of you and then they can kind of.
Yeah, or we'll just do the email.
We can do Google Forms.
Yeah.
Because of Google Forms, then you're just answering the questions and then it, then it all comes together.
Like a survey.
To us and we can see what your result, what results on all of your. So Google Form would be a way for us to.
You get your secretary right on that.
She's back.
Yay! Okay, we are at 10:19, we're about halfway, but we're actually more than halfway if we're going to push it. Should we just keep pushing or do we need a break?
Do we need a five, five minutes?
A quick break is, we fill water.
Okay, five minutes, ready, break. Monica, it's 10:27 and we are coming back together.
Okay, so let's move on to the goal number two. I think, you know, someone mentioned, I can't remember who, that evaluate the current state of facilities is probably not. I think it sounds like you, you've done that.
Yeah.
So do you want a, a goal around self, safe, healthy schools? Do you want something around facilities? Do you want something about learning in working environments? What?
So what's on my mind is. Preparing for two eventualities, right? Based on the. Based on November. Because there's going to be a fork in the road. It's not like Yogi, we can't just take it, we're going to be told which fork we're going to go. So. One eventuality is the bond passes and now we're in a scenario of, um, prioritizing and scheduling those, uh, projects that we'll have the resources to accomplish. The other one is triaging. Really, that's what it is, it's, it's triage, right? What are the sickest patients that we're going to have to try to address? So I don't know how to put that into a goal or even if that should be a goal, but that's, that's what Dennis and I have been, you know, and our EA conversations have been kind of grappling with.
Well, goals are time-bound. We set the timeline, we don't have to, we don't have to start the year with a facilities goal, we can do a wait and see. And then in January, come back with a calendar year goal because we know where we landed on the bond and say, this is the district's vision now with this money that's been entrusted to us by the public, by our community. Here's how we see it going forward and what our expectation is, I don't know what you think.
I think it's a good idea because then we'll know what we're working with at that time.
Your mind's working over there, Keith, what are you thinking?
I'm trying to think of the goal of, uh, facility improvements either through bond action or.
Alternative.
Alternative sources.
Yeah.
That way it, it covers whatever.
Whatever we have and don't have.
And we sort of hold into the facility improvement goal.
Do we want to include, uh, in the goal or as a sub-bullet, our priority areas of school safety?
Yeah, I was going to say what's, to what end.
Of special ed, um, facilities and future-ready STEM team.
Right, yeah, what's the, why do we want to?
Call those out.
We just don't, we don't, it's not that we care that we have the oldest buildings in the county. Why, what's our why? Why do we want to improve our facilities?
It's funny, we thought, uh, when the survey went out, we were thinking that folks, uh, might not be that tuned in with special education facilities. And, don't quote me, but I think the, uh, strong support or somewhat support, um, upgrading those facilities for students with special needs was in the mid 90s, I think it was about 95%. So it really resonated with, with people.
Can you have a living document embedded in the, oh, it's a priority list? That could change depending on catastrophic events, that could change based on a lot of things.
That's a good idea.
A document that the board agreed that's, that is a priority list, uh, subject to change based on unknowns. Maybe that's something you can put together as a, that priority list. If the board feels it's necessary to move things around, you can. But then you're still staying to that, that document.
Yeah, and we could, we could add a board meeting, say, you know, it's time we had this thing happen and we need to adjust our priorities and do it in a public fashion and move it around, yep.
That'd be an easy way to do it. So that way we're not, we don't have that goal out there of whatever and then somebody comes out a grant that's going to fund ESS and that becomes the number one focus because it's going to expire or whatever. So I think that would be a good way to. And it doesn't have to be, I, I don't know if I'd drill down into the, probably not a 30,000-foot, but maybe a 10,000-foot look at, you know, you've already talked about security, talked about science lab. Like STEM, security.
Especially as they relate to student achievement and our focus of our, our students are our number one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, STEM and career. On a blank.
CTE?
Huh? Just our, our career, our, our, our ABEC stuff. You know, our, our career aspiration, STEM and career aspiration were very high on the survey as well.
We were just, in fact, we were just talking about Perkins money yesterday. And we were waiting for you to come to, to Avid to see if you, if you were able to come over there because we had, we have that on our list to say, are, are elementary districts eligible for Perkins?
Perkins money in the, in the elementary school, that's crazy.
And this is a little bit off the task, but. I can't find it, but.
In Arizona, so the answer is yes, but not in Arizona. Because you know, all those grants.
Oh.
All those grants get managed, interpreted and managed through the state education department by state. So in talking with Tom Tyree, there, there's nothing that says Perkins money can't be allocated to middle schools.
But it has to go through.
Within the federal Perkins guidelines, but in Arizona, they, they don't take it, they don't allocate it below ninth grade.
Can Steady, now, can Steady do work with us?
Well, they kind of are, they've got Rusty Tindall there, they've got, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're engaging with, obviously with CFA curriculum, they're engaging with the automotive, um, folks for RC cars and all that. But it would be really nice if they could bump some of that money down through resources.
Yeah.
Because Steady is huge. They, I mean, they contributed $7 million to the high school district, the human union high school. Over 7.
They can lend us materials though. They can put the science kits together and lend them to us if they don't get used up, right?
So we've been talking about that actually, uh, county supers. The question is, can that be, um, like run through the county superintendent's office? As like the aggregator?
No.
For materials, so Tom Hurst is kind of looking into that. Making that more of an educational service agency concept, uh, where materials can be shared without another, without an additional IGA or.
Good stuff. Okay, so goal two, do we want to just create something that we, um, have safe, appropriate learning spaces for students, for our, the diversity of our students or something along those lines?
I don't know about appropriate because.
Well, I'm thinking appropriate for.
Yeah, I'm talking improvement because we know, we know that like 80% of all of our schools need to be improved.
Modern, okay.
We know we have 60 buildings on our campuses that are more than 50 years old.
Yeah. I'm thinking appropriate more along the terms of, of special ed students. So, um, adequately equipped or appropriately equipped. Because you could be, yeah.
Some of it's not just by equipment, sometimes it's about the facility itself.
Right, the size, the lighting.
The.
Accessibility.
How close it is to a bathroom.
Yes, yeah. So I don't know if that's.
Yeah.
Is that what, can we include the educators?
Safe and modern learning environment that meets the needs of every student.
Yes, every student, I like it. Capture that, Monica's recording.
I might be in touch with her. That meets the needs.
I like every. It's better than all.
Okay.
All or every level.
Then underneath there, do you want to have a, do you want to have a kind of smart goal around this, this conversation? If the bond passes and if the bond doesn't pass? So do you want to have something like create, um, plans for?
Or utilize funding.
Utilizing and seeking out funding.
And seeking out funding because if we'll utilize, if we get it, we're going to utilize that. But if we don't get it, then we're going to have to continue to seek out additional.
Seek and utilize.
Revenue sources.
So by the end of, and develop plans by the end of the school year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And hopefully that'll be accomplished soon.
Yeah, right?
So you know how we do, I don't, we need to look at what meetings, what meetings are generally short-er. I don't, we need to look at what meetings, what meetings are generally short-er. But I'm, so I get, I'm nerd and I get excited about this stuff, so you report to us, the goal, our progress goals, your progress goals, the things that you have overseen to make these things happen, but. I would like to maybe halfway through the year or partly through the year, report out at a board meeting, or have you report out at a board meeting, okay? We set this as a goal, where are we at with MAP, we set this as a goal, where are we at with funding, we set this as a goal, you know, where are we at with engaging? Our stakeholders and have them report out to us. Our, because if we're not monitoring it, it's not gonna, it's gonna happen, but is it?
And here's the thing, do any businesses ever say, we're gonna do this, we're gonna increase our customer capacity or customer? By this percentage and then never look to see if they've actually done it, no, everyone does that.
Right.
Right.
So.
How about on the, just a thought here on, on uh, data collection here. First, first board report of every month. Provides challenges and accomplishments, doesn't have to be full detail, it could just be. On each of the goals.
And information.
Friday reports.
Friday, yeah.
Okay.
Friday reports.
Ooh, I like that, Keith.
Just the first, just the first week of each month, just a status report of challenges and accomplishments and it can just be bullet format. That way it will.
We're apprised.
Remember to ask.
Relative to the goal.
Right, yeah.
I like it.
So is monthly, is that?
To us, and then we.
Would quarterly be better, is monthly, you don't think that's too often?
No, cause he gives us, he sends us four a month, it would just be the one of the four.
Last Friday, I don't, you know, whatever works.
Not be, it just might not be as, it might be better to do it monthly because.
Okay.
If it's quarterly, it might be.
Right.
Yeah.
Longer. Not digestible.
You gotta watch the trend.
And then it could.
How did you phrase that again, Keith? Challenges, but what else?
Accomplishments.
Yes, challenges and accomplishments.
And then it could spur one of us to say, that's really good, we need to hear that at a board meeting or.
If it's a challenge.
Or what are we gonna do about it?
Resources that. And that triggers us to engage rather than waiting till December to get any information.
I like it, yeah.
I know it puts a little bit more on you, Jamie, but I'm thinking it's just a bullet line of.
Well, and here's the other thing that gives, it gives him the opportunity to take that. From each month and then when you do a report at a board meeting.
Right.
You've kinda already done it.
Human record.
So it does, I think it accomplishes a couple of things, it informs the board, but it also. You know, allows and gives the opportunity for the administration to look at it monthly.
To assess, develop and implement.
There you go.
Checkmark, Keith, you're gonna get a gold star, you're allowed to leave at eleven thirty, sir.
Well, I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be done before eleven thirty, that's what I think. So that's for the number.
Was he a sub?
Yes, yep.
That's a, that's a, an achievable goal.
And yeah, you mean the reports, yeah, they got the two goals under there, right, one, seek revenue sources and two would be provide. A report.
Update the board.
Yeah. Okay, then we are on number three and this is. Parents and community engagement.
Yes.
One of the things that, I don't know, I, I, that we talked about when we talked about engagement and parents was. This really is a sweet spot that each site should be responsible for. Because every site is different, right, if you've got a lot of students in one school from military families, you may approach it differently than you would. Another school. I know when we were doing parent engagement in PV, one of the schools said, we really need to engage our East Indian families, there are. High percentage of East Indian families who really were, I'm gonna send my child to school and you're gonna teach them. And they're going to achieve. That was it, they weren't at, they didn't come to like the carnival, they didn't, they didn't do that stuff, so how do we?
We have a lot of.
Yeah, get those people.
High trust, but.
Yeah, there you go. So, um, so I do think when you're looking at the engaging parents in the community, you know, you probably wanna be pretty. Broad in both the overall goal and even the sub-goal, because. That is really where the principals and teachers and the people who are in that community can come up with a school-specific. And culture-specific goal.
My, my thoughts on this one here. I keep going back to the parent engagement. Right, how, how? Children with parents that are engaged in their education perform well. How do we either inform parents? Either just providing informational snippets about. Historically, children with parents engaged in education perform better. You know, here are opportunities to engage with your children, whether it be at home, whether it be at school, PTO meetings, you know, here's, at each, you're talking site, right? Push the PTO to get the parent, one of the parents engaged. Push the, hey, do you know how to check your kid's scores on? Their review, you know, those, those little tidbits or even a link to how to do that. Again, both in English and Spanish or any other language. It's not measurable, I don't think. But I think the possibility.
It could be reflected in a survey, could be part, a carefully worded survey question, did you?
Well, it could be, it also could be recorded on a number of hits you get in your grade books, I mean, that's, those are analytics that you.
There are some analytics behind the scenes we can look at, who, who has, how many people have gone into parent view, we can actually, I think we can look at that. Uh, Twenty First Century Schools, which I think were thirteen?
Yeah.
Thirteen of our schools are, are Twenty First Century, they are obligated to have their parent nights, they do sign-in sheets, so we actually have numbers of. Parents who participate in those things, I think those would be also some evidence of, of, of parent involvement.
Even Avid captures that.
Sounds like it's a tangible goal to set, increase that five percent by the end of the school year.
And we're having. We're having, we're seeing schools kind of reinstate those parent nights that they used to have.
Yeah.
I lived at the.
STEM night, STEM night.
McGraw were best friends.
Well, McGraw had their STEM night this year, it was.
Yes.
Sacked.
Yep.
Well, and here's the thing, we don't do sign-in sheets for those, it's not, it's not feasible to do that, but we need to maybe somehow capture and informally capture a number.
We can capture.
We can do some headcounts, we can do screenshots.
Be more intentional about how many folks are coming.
Yep, yeah.
And have the.
Or have, or have, oh, you can't do that, nevermind, I was gonna say have a raffle, but that's illegal.
Right.
PTO can do it.
PTO can do it.
I mean, leverage PTO?
Yeah.
I mean, how do you leverage PTO to your advantage?
Right.
You are a Google sheet as a.
Make sure they don't encumber money for a school.
I would um. I'd be very careful going down the PTO route. Uh, don't call, don't call that out specifically, but just.
Well, we can't do that, we can't call out PTO specifically because it's technically.
You're going to develop strategies.
Yes.
Organization.
And there's a couple that are, are struggling.
Some are struggling.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
No, you're, you can, in, in the. Monthly calendars or the newsletters, you can put point of contact for PTO, right?
In the activity calendars.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, so it's, I mean, it's not completely church and state, it's, it's a little bit.
You just want to, you wanna make sure that a reasonable person couldn't say, you know, you're running this PTO over here. And these parents, and, and you're calling all the shots as the school for what the PTO is doing.
Right, but if, if you're just providing that point of contact for parents to get engaged.
Yeah, that's perfectly acceptable, yeah.
Yep. Another, another kind of overlapping community engagement. Is, I know, you know, maybe now that Christine has assistance, but is to make sure our district is getting our district message out. At the community events, like we had the big kids at hope, two thousand people came to the kids at hope event and at Joe Henry Park. And what's our, I know we don't have a lot of swag to give out, but what's our opportunity to be a presence at? Those kind of events that are already gonna attract parents.
Back to school rodeo.
Back to school rodeo, so maybe.
Just the date festival, all the stuff that.
Right, anything that goes, happens downtown, downtown is our, this is, that's our attendance area.
Yep.
So have a. Yeah, a presence there, remember in high school district, we had a presence at the tamale festival. At all the stuff that happened in Somerton, because we were trying to build a school in Somerton.
And all the winter visitors had their ready Yuma bags.
But just if, if it's in a, a community event that's happening within our attendance zone, to get our. Uh, Yuma One tent up with a table and principals can take their, put up their name on the time that they're gonna show up and shake hands and. Answer questions, be visible.
Facebook page, what's going on in Yuma or something?
Right.
Something reggae on the river. It's coming up, I mean, all those types of things.
All the parades are in our district.
Right. Yeah.
All the parades are in our district, foothills parades.
Yeah, we've been having more conversations about that, now she has some capacity.
Right, right.
I think that's a great opportunity to.
So get our email, that should be one of our. Yes.
Play, theater.
Small groups, whatever.
Display art.
The OM team.
We can have some projects for students to kind of work on.
Yes, so I volunteer at the quarter master depot and we have all of these events, like we're having the B movie.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so we're gonna have all the, so we always have community groups come in and do, so AWC comes and. YPG comes, the engineers come and they do all these little activities, um, so we often, yeah, we often have. These, these evenings in the summer and what could the professional learning team do or what could, what could a school do or a district do? To engage our parents and say, hey, it's summer, but Yuma One is still here and maybe we make a new fan.
What are our financial limitations on? But that, I mean, the school can pay for an entry fee to go to an event?
Yeah, we can, we can pay for that, we have a, kind of a community engagement budget.
Okay, I was just wondering, cause the other alternative was.
It's marketing.
We're at two hundred and sixty, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in donations from our community. If the community, if we can't, if there's something we can't do, if donations come in to pay for admission to something.
We, there are certain line items, I guess, to speak more specifically to that we can use.
Yeah.
Information, donations that come in from the community usually are earmarked for something.
Yeah.
Uh, some of them saved at the principal's discretion, so those are much wider open, but sometimes they're, they're. Supplies, you know, for supplies for this class, well then, we need to be able to document for our auditors that. That money was spent on supplies for this.
Right, but I'm just thinking, uh, people and businesses throughout the county, when they start seeing District One at more events. And they ask a question, well, why don't you go to this one, well, we can't spend the money on the, the entry fee or whatever it is, but we can take a donation if somebody were to pay that.
Hey, Center Homes could say, we're gonna pay for the booth that week.
Right.
Thank you. Walk right into that one.
Talk to Stephen, because any kid that comes in asking for money always gets a check.
Well, yeah, a lot of times it's a manpower issue more than a money issue.
Yeah.
Not enough people to cover the.
Right.
The event, it is weekends and evenings and things like that, but.
We have more capacity now though.
Yeah.
And you can, that's where, with those involved PTOs, you can utilize that.
All our young leaders who wanna be administrators, who wanna be APs, APs who wanna be principals.
We have a group.
Yes, we do.
We have a group.
Yes.
Leverage them.
Yes.
So I'm thinking for this last, um, community and parent engagement, we would have two sub-goals, one would be increasing visibility of Yuma. One at community events.
That's very measurable.
The second one is increase. Parent engagement by, you know, via surveys and event. Attendance by five percent. By the end of school year, twenty-four, twenty-five.
What would the five percent be measured against, do we have a baseline or do we need to establish a baseline this year to measure against?
Dwayne, how, like, for example, in parent view. How would you capture engagement from this past year?
Oh, we, we pull up the analytics from how many people went in.
Considered.
To, to parent view, we can do it by school.
YETC to pull up that analytics.
And you could look at number of parents versus, I go in every day, so you don't wanna count me for, you know, one hundred and eighty days.
Represented, unique touches.
Yeah.
And, and you already have your Twenty First Century, so those could be your two kind of baselines for the coming year.
Yeah.
Then create a, a new baseline next year for the non Twenty First Century, whatever that is. So if, if those schools that aren't the Twenty First Century Grant schools have specific events or whatever. Let's do some attendance.
Right.
Numbers, yeah, this is where it was this year, next year we want it to be.
And Title One and migrant haven't.
Right.
Parents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You might be able to cover most of your schools with those three things, right? migrant. Title, Twenty First Century. Are there any, is there any tracking you have to do for DOD on? Evolved engagement?
Track, I don't think there's a parent involvement component to DOD.
I don't. I don't think so, there are parent. There are parent nights, but I don't know how they're writ, I don't know exactly how they're written in.
What about our liaisons?
I was just gonna say that.
Military, um, EMPLAX and what about?
EM, EMPLAX won't report out, they're, they're.
Their employees.
They are, they won't, that's not their job.
Well, we, we don't want them to violate.
Yeah, I don't know, I.
What if they just kept kind of a number of people?
They must have to keep that.
People they engage with.
They, they won't give it to you.
Not the actual EMPLAX, but yeah, I, I think there's ways to do it, I think we just have to figure that one out.
How many times did the club meet after school at Wally and how many kids participated and?
Yep, those are easy. Those all have sign-in sheets and things like that, everybody's really pretty good about keeping sign-in sheets. When, when it's, when it's quite feasible, but uh. Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly what's written in the, in the DOD grant. But I can, we can certainly find out.
Hi, anything else?
I, I would like to just kind of share with the board a few things that are on our radar that I don't know if. I don't know if they warrant a goal or, but. Couple of things are, uh, special education challenges. With the numbers, not only have we seen a three hundred student increase in. Overall numbers over the last two years. So going from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred, I, I was an English guy, so I'm not quite sure what the. Percentage on that is, but I think three hundred out of twelve hundred, that's like twenty-five percent increase.
Really close.
Over two years. Uh, and twelve new, so. Dwayne, help me remember, when I was, when I first got here in twenty sixteen, how many different schools had multiple special education specialized programs?
How many different schools had different ones?
Yeah.
Specialized, like South County or?
A third of them. Now we have schools that have three, four specialized programs.
Most of our schools had a program, most of the schools had a program.
Right.
Okay, but not multiple programs.
They were like magnets?
So everybody except for Roosevelt and Price had a program.
Right, just extensive programs.
Correct, and then, since then, though, it's just gone, it's almost every school is gonna end up having an autism program.
Yes.
They're coming up. And then having extensive intensive programs as well.
So what that's done is put a, a fairly sudden.
Very sudden.
Stress on our ESS system. From our directors to our, our director to our coordinators to our psychologists and therapists and classroom teachers and.
Perez.
And Perez and. It's a really hard job. It's also, uh, hard to find. Highly qualified, fully certified people in those areas. And then looking at our special education preschool requirements, which. Public schools are responsible for what they call child find, so we have to find and evaluate any child. Within our attendance area by the time they're three years old, who may have, uh, who may have special needs, so. Erica and her team are out there working with the hospital, with regional center, with all these different. Entities to get referrals for, with WakeHog for their early head start, for students who need to be evaluated. And there's no indication, uh, based on our little guys in our attendance area, that these numbers are gonna slow down. So that's an area that. We're gonna be putting some. Time and effort and resources into trying to figure out. How we can reevaluate, restructure. Our, our department in that area, cause. It's not really wise to say, okay, well then we need more of these, and more of these, and more of these, and more of these, we need, we're at a point where we need to step back and take a look at the whole thing and say. Is there a different way or a better way to, to do this, yes, we're gonna need more resources, we're gonna need more people, there's no question about it, you don't serve. You don't serve twenty-five percent more kids without adding people to serve them, right? So that's, that's something that's on our radar for this year. I don't know if that's.
Could I propose something that? I, I think it is, but I think we're a year away. I think we stick with these three goals and as this plays out this year and we get information and data and we see the need, then we come back at this time next year and say, okay, here's what happened with this influx of students and these programs. And now we need to look at the resources and the support we can provide as a board. Because how do you front load that if you don't know how it's gonna play out or you don't know what the impact is gonna be? So let's see what happens this year. Not saying, oh, we don't care, but maybe that's, we keep our eye on it. And then maybe next year we come back and say, okay, our facilities plan is moving smoothly. Let's bump out a student achievement for ESS kids.
How do we do with the demand for this year while we're waiting till next year?
We're, we've added programs for this coming year, six more. The early indication, what Matt shared was last week is almost all of them are at our staffing, are at our, uh, staffing ratios.
Just because it's not a goal doesn't mean it's not a focus.
Right.
Right, right.
Well, or, or you're gonna be doing it. So why not have that be a sub-goal under student achievement? If, if you're, if you're saying to your administration, do the work and then we won't think about it until next year, why not just have it be a sub-goal if you all think it's something that's obviously achievable? Because you don't wanna, I mean, the last thing you wanna do, right, is put so much on people that they can't do it.
And I'm also wondering.
One is pretty robust.
Right, it is.
Well, I'm also thinking we don't, we don't know what the, do we know what the problem is?
Not really.
So that's why.
So that's, that's, is that investigate, identify?
Problem's not the right word. Do we know the scope of the problem?
Yeah, so I'm saying that, it's not that we don't do anything, but it's that we, this year plays out and that helps us identify, okay, it's a staffing issue, it's a facilities issue, it's the students are coming in, uh, without skills or we don't have the support staff, there aren't enough speech therapists in Yuma, Arizona. How do we work with the hospital to get some? So I think this year is, maybe the governance team keeps their eye on it, the principals keep their eye on it, Matt does.
And a contracted, a contracted related service provider? What do we see, a hundred and eighty bucks an hour?
Something like that.
You need to get out of, put some pharmacy in, yeah.
So, yeah, so it's like, you sure you don't wanna come and be a full-time therapist for our school district for sixty-five grand? Uh, a third of the money.
With, with probably not as good benefits.
Is there a grant for something like that?
Well, not that we've come across, other than the ones we already have.
IDA.
There's only, there's only, there's a couple of emergency grants for if you have high, high, high need kids and it, and it's taking a toll on your budget, but.
But speaking of the budget piece, when the state did their own review and each, um, ESS kid is underfunded by about five grand. So that's seven and a half million dollars just for our district is how underfunded we are with the kids that we currently have. So, um, totally worth it, but it's a significant investment, you know, and, and every, every time we grow in that area, you know, there's, there's a, a cost associated with that that we have to adjust to.
Somewhere else.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Especially without reason benefits.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I am gonna write a goal, a sub-goal, and then you all decide whether you wanna keep it or not.
Okay.
Right, because, I mean, we could make a very long list of things that we need to address. But just because we don't identify them here, it all still falls under the umbrella of the obligation of superintendent staff to, to address those things and bring people.
Right.
And I'm not saying we don't wanna put it on there, but if it comes to a point where we need to start focusing on that, that would be a very good goal for next year.
Maybe we just keep monitoring. You know how Matt does his monthly report? But maybe we can get that into a, a friendlier look.
Yeah.
So we could see, hey, how many programs at Alice Burn are at capacity?
What's the ratio?
Carvers.
Right.
Pecan groves.
Something kind of evaluate type of thing.
And I still think the bullet I do.
An assessment. Here's where we are.
Yeah.
And we, we keep on it and maybe, uh, earlier in the year or after we get going, November, he, I was talking to Teresa. I'm trying to think about the fall already, um, that we have Matt present and say, okay, this is, our school year has started and let me tell you about our student populations, our teachers, our classrooms.
It also leaves it open, I mean, through my years of supervising evaluating performance, you don't identify every single one of them.
Right.
You wanna leave those out there for, for them to say, we focused on what you told me to focus on. In addition, for the other monumental things that we focused on. And I think that falls in that area.
Yeah.
You have more?
What else is on your mind?
Oh, the other one is just, um, succession planning. They just went to a conference this fall and first spring.
Yeah, the, um. Trust did it.
So we know, we know Dr. Alka and Terry Lower retiring at the end of the year.
End of next year.
End of next year.
End of, end of twenty-five.
This year's already ended.
Well, not so soon.
Not quite.
It's just getting started.
So we're gonna be bringing to you, and I don't think this is a goal, this is just something I want you guys to know is on my radar. There's invariably gonna be a domino effect because we have great building leaders right now. We have, um, I can't give you a percentage, but I can tell you, we have more, principals that are highly certified and either have or are pursuing their super tennis certificate than probably the rest of school districts in the county combined. A lot of that's because we have a number of principals that came from other school districts. Okay? Part of that, I think, is our culture. I think a lot of it's our culture because some of those folks took significant pay cuts to come and join our team. So it's safe to assume that some of these district level positions are gonna be filled by building level people. And, uh. And that domino, so we wanna time it out, right? We wanna time it out. We don't wanna say, okay, it's March and it's time to start.
No, we do not want to start.
He's already sweating.
It's June thirtieth and you're holding interviews, you know, so.
It'll be done in March, right?
It'll be done in January.
Just kind of a heads up, look, look to hear, look to see, you know, before Christmas, some, um, some identification of, in recommendations for, to fill these first level positions. So then we, in the spring, are in a position where we can, because we run a very thorough process. And it takes, we can't just fill a principal or assistant principal position in two weeks. We, uh, we post it, we get, we get, uh.
I was gonna be snarky about other districts, but I'm not going to. Hold that comment.
Well, I put that down here. We, we, let me just state this as a positive, use an I message. We have dot and will not, uh, compromise on our requirements of certification for our, for our administrators. So you can interpret that however you, uh, however you like. In fact, just a little anecdote, a few years back, we hired a principal, who had already done all the coursework and taken the exam and at the time of the interview, hadn't received the final results for the exam. And some principals came in to see me and they said, we wanna make sure that we're not lowering our standards because it's always been that you have to have a certificate in hand in order to be able, in order to qualify to apply for one of our jobs. And I said, Miss Turd, I understand and I, and I agree with you. We don't, we don't put out there, uh, certificate or ability to obtain. We put out there that you need to have a certificate. And we're really blessed to, to be able to hold that line because of the people that we, that we have. And as a cultural piece, I think our principals insist on it as well. That when they, when they bring on a peer, that that person has, uh, has gone through the, the education and the experience that they went through and that.
They have high expectations for each other.